I haven't opened the meeting, it's 6:33. Okay. It looks like we have everybody except Dick at this point. Anyway, I guess first thing is, I'll accept a motion to waive reading of the remote meeting notice.
I'm making a motion to waive the meeting notice.
I almost thought I heard a second.
That was me, Norm.
Okay.
I wonder if the speaker's not working.
Yeah. Peter, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
How am I sounding, sir? Cause I'm on Wi-Fi right now. Do I sound better?
Yeah, it's not great today.
Huh. I'll try to articulate.
Any discussion on the motion to waive the reading? Then roll call vote, all in favor, Tim?
Narwhal, aye.
Uh, let me see, who have we got here? Oh, wait a minute. We also don't have Marilyn. Okay, Sean?
Aye.
Uh, Norm, aye. Motion carries. Okay, so who are we, the three of us? Uh-huh. Well, let's have everybody do a very, very good job of reading the minutes of November 10.
Oh, there was one change in here, Norm. I was trying to find it with the dates that were wrong.
Okay, I have one change myself.
Oh, here it is. It's on the second page. It said, it said that, uh, Jim's letter stated that he was retired as of July 1st.
Okay, your audio is still kicking in and out here, so.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. Um, it, it, um.
Interrupt your video, it might help.
Alright, yeah, let me do that. Okay, stop video. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be Charter giving me the best service possible.
Okay.
On the second page, um, the, about three quarters of the way down, it says Jim's letter stated that he retired as of July 1st, 2020. And the certification was 2019. I thought it was, his letter stated that it was July 1st, 2019 that he retired.
Well, I don't have the letter in front of me. Uh, we'll have to go back and take a look at it. If so, if so, we will make that change.
September of 2019, cause I remember us discussing that.
Yeah. Unless anyone else, anyone else has the letter in front of them right now.
I don't, I just, I made a note of it, it's the only reason I did say that.
Okay. Okay, I have one change on the first page. Uh, under Maple Hill subdivision administration. The third line, uh, in that paragraph. Says Cle added that he has submitted his waiver for the islands and Maple Hill Estates. Uh, that they do not need to be built in the cul-de-sacs. I believe he was referring that he has submitted the waiver for Bryce Lemon.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause there's nobody.
The original designs had, uh, islands on them, the cul-de-sac. I could be wrong.
And Bryce Lemon.
Oh, okay. Well, I knew Bryce Lemon, but I thought he said Maple Hill might have had, maybe not.
Cause you know, we, we also, you know, you look a little further down on that one. We also mentioned just briefly, Britton Estates and Noble Hill. That he would probably, uh, he would need to get a waiver on those.
Yeah, is there, and I don't remember, cause I don't have the drawings in front of me and we're not there. Is, I guess we better check to make sure Maple Hill doesn't have any islands on them too.
Yeah. I, I am relatively sure it does not.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it does either.
More?
I don't believe so either.
Uh-huh.
Had to go back and re-zoom.
Hey, Dick, hey, I found out, uh, actually it was thanks to Peter. If you turn your video off, your audio will work great.
Okay.
Hey, there you go, like me, Charter, Charter seems to only give us half our service.
So, Norm, I did take a look at the plans that I'm in the office here tonight. I don't see any, I don't see a cul-de-sac out on Teresa Drive for Maple Hill, Maple Hill Estates.
Okay.
Alright, cool. Norm, does that just get, that whole sentence get just struck then?
Well, you could just change the Maple Hill to Bryce Lemon. Because that's what he was talking about. But that it probably should be in the Bryce Lemon section of the minutes.
Yeah.
And, you know, is it critical to the minutes to have that sentence in there? Probably not.
No, that's what I was thinking.
What are, what are you, what are you doing, Norm?
Well, we're looking at the, at the Maple Hill Estates section of the minutes.
Okay.
Uh, the third line in that paragraph. It says, Cle added that he had submitted his waiver to the islands and Maple Hill Estates. I think he was referring to that he had submitted the waiver, uh, request for Bryce Lemon.
I think you're right, Norm.
So, you know, even, even if it's a little bit out of place, the easiest thing is just changing Maple Hill to Bryce Lemon in that sentence.
So move.
Okay, everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll wait for a motion until we accept the minutes. Uh, anything else on the minutes? Or does anybody need more time?
Uh, I'm all set, I've, I've read it. Take a motion to accept the minutes with correction.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, roll call. Uh, Dick?
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim?
Tim Narwhal, aye.
Sean?
Sean Moore, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Okay, next we have an A and R, I believe. If I can get back to that. Uh, pieces of land located on the southerly side of Wildbrook Drive. Uh, and I believe you all did, did get number one. Uh, full-size plans as well as a reduced copy.
Yes.
And what they are doing here is creating a parcel A and a parcel B, which are going to be combined with uh, something.
Yeah, I'm glad you didn't put in something.
Well, and my question, Norm, is, are they also changing lot 1- R? Because what they've done, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. I believe that parcel B is going to be added to lot 1- R.
My point being is if they do that, that lot by NF Guild no longer has enough frontage. It's basically a lot that has no frontage then, per the, uh, the zone.
Yeah, I think it's an existing house on Pleasantale Road.
Right.
Okay, but didn't they just rebuild that thing? Or they're in the pro-
I thought they took the garage down.
Oh, okay. I, I just, I thought they were, I thought they were, because when it was originally built, I think it had a, let's see, 90, uh, 120 and maybe 70. So it had the 200-foot frontage around, I guess Pleasantale and Willowbrook Drive. I'm not saying that's right, but it had, and I thought when they did this A and R.
Hello, my name's Christopher DeSantis, I own the property.
Yeah.
Yes.
The property on Wildbrook, that little sliver goes with 42 Wildbrook, not, not with the Gould residence.
Okay.
Okay.
That little sliver I purchased from Cle many years ago to make that a 2.76 acre. So that goes with 42 Wildbrook, all the frontage on Wildbrook.
Wow. Okay. I guess I'll, I'll have to ask the building inspector how he allowed anything on Gould property, but that's not this issue.
So, the two parcels were cut out. The reason we're doing that is because there might be a possibility we have to move, and that was all family land to the, to the DeSonniers. It's not so much that we're even gonna attach it to anything. I just wanna give them back some property so they can have gardens and the kids can play and stuff. That'll leave 42 with 1.6 acres. They'll still have a backup septic payment for the front. And it'll still have 200-plus feet of front.
Right now, don't we, Norm, when we typically do something like this, is it like the parcels have a note, non-buildable lot or something like on it?
We have been doing that, and, uh, I guess, uh, my, my question is, would there be any objections to us just adding a note to the Mylar on parcel, uh, A and parcel B, that they are not buildable lots?
They have it, they have it down in the note thing. If you look catacorred to Pleasantale Road, they've got it in, but it's not physically, it's not physically on the part.
If I may through the chair, uh, I was up there speaking with Dave today about this. And that, um, the fact that it says parcel, um, means that it's, it's not buildable on Dave's pool name. So I'm okay with just leaving it. I asked him, I asked him that exact question, Norm. And, uh, you, you informed me of the fact that it says parcel and it's not lot.
Uh, yes. And, and, and yes, I did, we did have that conversation, but I also indicated that just to make it absolutely clear, it was acceptable to put a note on parcel A and parcel B indicating that's not a buildable lot as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what-
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I, I just like, this is just me personally, that note down there that's, that's catacorred to-
You left us again, Tim. A and R. So, uh.
I, besides that, Norm, today is the first time I ever heard lot versus parcel being the difference between the two. And I feel that from now on, we better say if it's a lot, it's okay, but if it's a parcel, non-buildable. It's gonna be-
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna, I don't want any, we've got a new building inspector, we've got new people coming in, and I just don't want them to be confused.
Uh, Mr. DeSonnier?
Yes?
Would you have any objection to us just penning in on those two parcels? Uh, the words that this is not a buildable lot?
No, that's fine. We don't plan on building on it. We wanna give some, we property back, that's all.
Okay.
Good with that, Norm.
Okay, would there be any more questions on this one?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. Um, we took in a check for 450, but I believe it's 500. Would you just like to verify the, um, the cost of the A and R?
Oh boy.
With the dotted lines that show the old versus the new.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm-
You're creating parcel A and parcel B.
And they're creating a new lot 1R.
Yeah, a new lot 1R. Is that all?
That's just, I think that's, that's three new, they're taking one big one and making three new ones. Is that correct?
No, they're adding.
No, cause they're, they're subtracting the original one included, the original, at least what I could find online was lot 1. It's now lot 1- R, included parcel A and parcel B.
Correct.
Right.
So you're thinking- I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, so what's happening here? So you have an existing lot 1, which is now becoming a new lot 1R, which is one thing. Parcel A and a parcel B, and a new lot 1R. So you're, you're creating, you're altering or creating four pieces of land plus the base fee of 300.
Yeah, that's, that's what I agree, cause lot 1 is, is the one that's being altered, and then you've created three new uh, pieces of property. So that's total of four.
Total of four, yeah.
Okay.
And then plus the base 300 is 500.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see, uh, a, a new map with the dotted lines of the existing. That would make it a lot clearer.
Well, I think that's, that's something that we can maybe take a good look at as we're reviewing our subdivision regulations to, to become, you know, a lot more specific in what we require on A and Rs even.
Yeah, I mean, we, and Norm, we've got the state regs for A and R, but do, do we have the ability to be tougher than the state with an A and R?
I don't know.
Okay.
That will be a legal question.
Okay.
So it sounds like the applicant ought to submit another $50?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and just one thing for the applicant, so if the board approves this tonight, the town planning office will be closed from the 25th until the 27th. This meeting is a remote meeting. The board does not have the ability to sign the A, the Mylar until they come in individually to sign it. So this A and R would not be signed until sometime in the middle or the end of next week. Okay? Just wanna provide notice on that?
Sounds good.
Are they open tomorrow?
Um, yeah, so that's all set. If this is gonna be signed and ready next week, then I can just bring a check up to the town clerk, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. That's, that's non-issue for me.
Okay. Do I have a motion to endorse the plan?
Also move.
Well, I'll make a motion to endorse and then you can so move.
Do I have a second?
Alright, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hey, roll call vote, Tim?
Tim Narwhal, aye.
Sean?
Sean Moore, aye.
Dick?
Dick Williams, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. And we still, I don't think have Marilyn, right?
No, I haven't seen her come on, Norm.
Okay.
Question for, uh, Norm, for Dave. Do you want us to drop these, uh, full-size back off to your office?
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind doing that, I'd appreciate it because you folks have all the full-size copies right now.
And, and so you're, you're on vacation tomorrow?
Yeah, but as you know, we have our, our system in the office. I think that the, if you open up that slider, you can, you can toss it through.
Okay, I'll do that. Not a problem. I'll, I'll-
Alright, thanks.
...be off tomorrow when I come up to see it needed to sign the tri-party.
Great, thank you. And, uh, what about signing the Mylar?
So I, I would ask the board to come up, um, on the week of the 30th?
On the week of the 30th?
Yeah, so the 30th, December 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th?
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, what's next?
Okay, anything more on this? Okay, uh, next on our agenda, Maple Hill subdivision administration. Uh, whoops, excuse me, wrong, 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 wrong. Uh, public hearing on Wheeler Road Solar. Uh, they are requesting a further continuance to December 8th. Uh, any questions or comments?
The only comment, Norm, I was gonna put on that, can we put 2021?
Uh, well, it might not be too appropriate, but-
I've got a frantic grid that, uh, tells me that, uh, um, don't plan on be doing any solar in the next 18 months.
Yeah, well.
So, yeah, that's, I, I, I guess, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, continue the hearing for the Wheeler Road Solar till December 8th, 2020.
At?
Uh, let's go, uh, 6:45.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Is the town cutting the trees or is the solar people?
My guess would be that the solar people would be doing it. By the time they get around to doing it, there's probably gonna be some gigantic ones.
Just in the back of my mind, I was thinking that maybe the town could make a, a bucket too if the price of, uh, timber comes up. I know they're not very big trees up there, but, uh, just, just a thought.
Well, yeah, it's a thought.
Dick, I, I think they'll be 24 or 18-inch round trees by the time this gets built.
Uh, well, if solar backs out, it'd be a nice place for athletic field. Give all those kids a place to look towards Boston.
Is that, is that property 61A, or did they take it out?
No, it's, it's the town of Rutland's property.
Oh, well, that makes it even easier.
Yeah.
And isn't that, that, that's pretty high up if I'm not mistaken too, correct?
It's the highest point in Rutland.
Oh, that'd make a great septic or sewer treatment plant.
The residue can go over to Jordans.
You read my mind.
Okay, I had a motion and a second, I believe. Anything further? Roll call vote, once again, Dick?
Dick Williams, aye.
Sean?
Sean Moore, aye.
Tim?
Tim Narwhal, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. And the motion carries. Uh, next is Maple Hill Estates subdivision administration. And I believe we have nothing further on Maple Hill Estates.
No, I didn't see anything.
Uh, you, you are correct, there was no consultant reports. The only thing on this one is that there's the tri-party agreement. It needs the signatures of all five board members. I believe right now it has three. I think Tim will be able to sign it tomorrow. I did send an email to Marilyn as a reminder.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, next. Uh, Bryce Lemon Estates subdivision administration.
I didn't see anything on that either.
No. Uh, let me see. This has kind of been all since last week. If you remember, we had, uh, one of the homeowners on Sedona Circle complained about puddling water.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, what was the last? Last Friday, we had rain.
Yeah, and we had a, we had a ton yesterday too.
Yeah.
Anyway, I went over there while it was raining. And it kinda looked like, yes, there is some puddling. It's, I don't know, without, without being able to draw pictures, it's pretty hard for me to really describe everything.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, uh, I had a, got a call from, uh, Cle this afternoon. This afternoon, yesterday, I don't know. Anyway, uh, he went over during the last, this last rain that we just had yesterday. Okay? And he said the water was running, you know, along the gutters into the car, into the storm drains. He went back, if you remember, the rain, uh, yesterday stopped in the afternoon. He went back over there in the afternoon and he said, there was no puddles.
Hmm.
After the rain had stopped. So, I still left it with Cle because I had already talked with Carol on it. And I asked him to go over there sometime when it is raining and take a look at it. Now, whether he did during this last rain or not, I don't know. Uh, but I told Cle that I'm gonna wait until I hear from Carol.
Yeah, we're supposed to, Norm, I think the next couple of days, we're supposed to get some, some, some significant rain too.
Yeah. Well, yeah, even on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, see, that's the problem. It's gonna happen on Thanksgiving where nobody's open.
Yeah, just to let you know, I went over there- Yeah, just to let you know, I went over there checking things out also, and I went up on the new pot, phase three. And, uh, I, I tell you, I'm not too happy with the fact that there's that much land wide open, and you could see where it had run, run over, you know, a little amuckin' places. They were trying to compact the road back down again. So, I could have sworn, Norm, that we had something in there that so many acres could not be open if it was over a certain angle, twenty percent angle. And that, that doggone thing is more than twenty percent.
It's in our subdivision regs.
Yeah, I don't believe we have anything.
Really? Uh, yeah, I, I told Dave I was gonna take a look. I didn't get a chance to get back into the house here to look into subdivision regs for open space. But, God, you know, we, we had the problem for Noble Hill when we did that, and after Bear Hill, so I, I can't figure that we did not know something was gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I know, I know we put some pretty strong restrictions on Noble Hill, but that's all I remember.
Yeah, 'cause when we walked it, I remember walking it, Norm, and, and we were worried about the, uh, angles going down into the wetlands.
Yeah.
There was some pretty steep slopes coming off where the roads were gonna be down into the wetlands, and we didn't want, we didn't want another bear hill, is I think what everybody had said.
Right.
But there's still wetlands at the bottom of this one, too, and they have, uh, run over once, so... Anyways, uh, I, I just, I just wish to have, this time of year should have been seeded or something like that and covered. And it, and it bothers me between what we should have done and/or talked on or... But, uh, to me, it's too wide open, and, and no way in heck are you gonna put something down there now to root in.
Well, no, a- and there is, it's a huge amount of open space.
Yes.
I, I have to, uh, one hundred percent agree there. But, by the way, supposedly, they were starting to pave today.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what happens. And not only that, I was asked by s- uh, a certain person, uh, called me and said, it's the next-door neighbor there by the, uh, pumping house. Looked like they got flooded. The water coming in, uh, right there, there's a little small detention pond for the, for the edge of that road.
Yeah.
Under the pump, and it went right on that guy's property, and that's a no-no.
Yeah. That's the lot that they cleared some, right?
Uh, it's next to the lot they cleared, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just, just keep it in, in mind, I think another one of these things that needs to be done.
Uh, Dick, what you're thinking of is, under section thirty-one of the open space, it discusses about unbuildable lots. And it says it shall exclude from the number of lots shown on the conventional development plan. All lots with the board's finds are not reasonably buildable. Where the reason be accepted development site prep costs, sanitary disposal, blah, blah, blah. And then it says the presence of bordering wetlands slopes greater than fifteen percent. Land subject to flooding or land subject to state or preg- and it goes on, but that's where it talks about the, the use of buildable lots in, uh, the open space.
And that's it right there, because it's non-buildable. He, he does not have house lots right there. And the angle is better than twenty percent.
And then it, it talks about in section thirty-two that no more than fifty percent of the thirty-three percent of the minimum open space can have slopes greater than fifteen percent. So it's basically saying, what, sixteen and a half percent of the open space can have slopes greater than fifteen percent? So that's another caveat that I don't, I don't ever remember us looking into.
And, uh, open space, does it go up the hill as well as, which I think it does?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really define it. It just says, this is, the title for these sections is called Minimum Required Open Space, and then it goes into a definition.
Well, anyways, I think that sometime in the future, when we're having a business meeting, and Carl Holgren's there to help us, that should be brought up.
Okay.
So, how, how to write it up or whatever.
Yeah, that, that's gonna require a little bit of, uh, a little bit of research.
Yeah.
Well, you start to realize how much land is still around, but it's a lot of steep slopes around.
Oh, yeah, and, and most of the really good land is gone.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon?
No. Oh, I guess, Norm, I did have a question, did, a- and maybe this is for you and David. Did, did Cle get all the documentation in so we can start moving forward with, um, you know, get the hearings set up and get this stuff out of the way before the end of the, before January, February next year? Has that all been turned in?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just saying we better remind him, or this will be January, February, trying to, trying to slam this thing in at the last minute.
Well, uh, Dave had a conversation with Cle about envelopes and stickers and that sort of thing already, so...
Okay, good. I just wanna, I don't want us to, I guess I'm being proactive is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Uh... And, I, I don't know, the, the one thing that I don't want to let go is that we do need to have revised sheets showing those cul-de-sacs without the planted islands.
Yes.
Uh, however, it's not really necessary for us to have those until the public hearing.
Correct. Yes, but I want to make sure that at least for... I, i- 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 if this is got, i- if this first part of the subdivision's gonna be put on the May, uh, town meeting, I'm okay with that. 'Cause I want to make sure we've got all the latest and greatest drawings when we're going to this May town meeting, as Carl asked for it. 'Cause originally, the stuff that was provided, when I say stuff, drawings, um, even Carl said that we needed more detail to the package.
Right. And I am at least assuming they're working on that.
Yep, yep. I just wanted to make sure that, that package includes this cul-de-sac update.
Right. Uh... Not, not that it's even germane to our, uh, conversation, uh, but, uh, just kind of interesting in talking with, uh, Mr. Blair, uh, today. Uh, both he and his wife were positive for cor- coronavirus.
Oh, boy.
And he is just, he is just ending his quarantine. No severe symptoms, but, uh... So my guess is that probably for the past couple of weeks, he hasn't been doing as much. Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon?
No. Hi, this is Julian. Before you guys go on to another subject, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
I'm going back to Welchav, Bonnie Bessis. Did you ever hear anything from the attorneys on that concept that we, uh, submitted for those A and Rs?
Dave, have we heard anything?
Uh, right, so as you can see, it's not on the agenda. The reason why it's not on the agenda is we haven't heard back from the attorneys on this matter yet.
Okay. Alright, that's all I need to hear. Thank you.
Okay.
Have a nice holiday.
You too, Julian.
Okay, on to the next, revision of subd- uh, two subdivision regulations. Um... Dave sent out a, uh, a revision of, uh, the monuments section, which I took a look at, and I made some further modifications. I did email it back to Dave. Uh, have you gotten that yet?
Norm, you sent it out to us, too, or it got sent out to us, too, correct?
That's right, I did.
Yep, I saw that, and I looked it over, and I was gonna say, let's go with this.
Does, does Dave have it so we can put it up on the screen?
Uh, I, I don't have easy access to put the v- uh, version up, but you do have that in your email?
Yeah, but I don't want to lose Zoom to go into my email.
Yeah, you know, that, that's the problem. I'm sure I could do that here, but I would, I don't know how that I could get into email or anything else while I'm in Zoom.
Hold on a second.
What, I don't have, this is part of the packet, unfortunately, so I'm, I'm look-
Yeah, Norm, what, what did you change?
Okay, oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy.
I do have the version that I sent, uh, previously, which is right here.
Okay.
Uh, you're changing, you changed one of these down here, Norm.
Okay, what I changed, uh, let me just take a, a quick look here, duh, 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 duh. Uh, in the second paragraph, uh, there's a sentence, uh, pilot is blocked off here. I don't know if I can move this thing over or not. Uh, no, I can't. The last sentence in the second paragraph, it says, "Where ledge prevents the, uh, installation of such mo- uh, monuments, uh, the board may approve the, the use, uh, of a drill hole." I took that out of there, okay, and put it down below, uh, the paragraph that says out monuments at all other locations. And that way, it just, it just, to me, it, it read a little bit better, uh, that way. And I also removed the paragraph that says monuments at all other locations. I removed that whole thing. It didn't make sense. To me, it ju- just, uh, seemed to me that, that that was duplicating words.
The three foot versus three and a half?
No, the steel rods are three feet. The three and a half is for, only for the concrete or granite posts.
Yeah, but I'm trying to see where that three foot, other than that one you just eliminated, doesn't say anything about three foot.
Uh, duh, 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 duh.
Hey, Dave, i- if you give me, i- if I request remote control, could I put this Word document that Norm set up on the screen?
Uh, yeah, I'm not the host of this, actually. I, uh, Peter Cranes is the host of this meeting, 'cause he got on before me.
Okay.
Yeah, you should be able to do that, Tim.
Alright, so I'll request remote control right now, and hit the request.
Actually, I don't think you want remote control. I think Dave needs to stop sharing, and Tim can start sharing his screen.
Okay, I got a shared thing down here, yep. Alright, let me share mine, and... Okay, this should be it right here, if everybody can see it. This is the one Norm, uh, sent out.
Okay. Can you zoom it up a little bit?
Uh, yep, give me a quick second to find that zoom feature. There it is. Zoom. Where do you want me to go? 'Cause I, I-
Okay, that looks good.
Okay.
Okay, the, the way this reads now, uh... Okay, the monument on the street lines must be concrete or granite poles, blah, 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 blah. Okay? The next one, monuments shall be installed at all lot corners, and shall be a minimum one-inch steel rod driven three feet into the ground. Then the next paragraph down simply says, "Where ledge prevents the installation of such monuments, the board may approve the use of a drill hole, uh, in one-inch diameter, one-foot-long iron rod for specific locations only." So the corner lots have to be three feet unless there's ledge, then they can drill and put in a one-foot.
Norm, should that be, should that read, "Approve use of a drill hole that is one-inch diameter, one-foot long for such specific locations only"?
Uh...
I'm just asking.
Uh, it, well, you, 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 you don't want a one-foot deep drill hole for a one-foot-long rod. You want the rod to be able to stick up out of the hole.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, I see what you're saying. I just was reading, I was trying-
I think I like it.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I just, yeah, it just-
You know, I see, I see what you're getting at.
Yeah, I'm just not sure.
Uh...
You know what? Le- leave this alone. I- if somebody's got a question, they can ask us. 'Cause you give the dimensions, Norm, that's the most important thing. Yeah, I'm fine.
By, by the way, I did, uh, in my couple of conversations with Cle, he is still adamant that a three-quarter inch rod is more than enough.
Yeah, I know.
I told him that if he can convince all the rest of you, I'd go along with it.
Only if it's stainless steel.
Yeah.
Uh... I mean, uh, uh, because, because half-inch and three-quarter inch is a more common, um, size, I'm okay with three-quarters. Half-inch I'm not happy about, 'cause that's basically like rebar, but three-quarter inch is a pretty hefty piece of iron.
The thing is, that's probably what they're gonna use as rebar anyway.
Yeah, but finding a one-inch rebar, oh, my. That, that's basically what, uh, is, is typically used for, uh, bridges.
Well, there's metal detectors, right? They can get a metal detector.
But like I said, you know, I, I dealt with one-inch, uh, steel rods, chrome plated, for hydraulic cylinders, and there wasn't that much money.
They weren't, Dick? Okay.
Oh.
I, I just, i- it's the availability when you're doing construction, three-quarter inch and half-inch are readily available for most, uh, shops or, or anything you gotta buy. One inch just isn't a common, a common size.
Well, sometimes what bothers me is the steel, you know, the makeup of the steel that you're-
Oh, yeah.
All they gotta do is get onto Peterson Steel in Worcester.
Yeah, okay, you got, okay. You guys are, you guys are convincing me to shut the heck up. Alright, good enough. I'll leave it at one inch.
Alright, so how, how do you want, you want to, uh, make a motion and set up a-
Before you do that, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes. Yes.
Um, so, the, 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 the complete paragraph does, the, the, towards the top of the page, monuments at all street lines shall be. Okay. The next paragraph starts monuments, oh, no, no, sorry, keep going down. I've lost my be- my point. Okay, right there, that'll, that will be good. Uh, so we have monuments to all street lines shall be, and it talks about the concrete and granite posts. Fine. Monuments shall be installed at all lot corners and shall be a minimum of the one-inch steel rod. Well, aren't street lines part of the lot corners? Do we, do we have a conflict because lot corners are on the street lines? I think that's where the all other locations notion came from that was removed. So I, if I may suggest, it, the first, well, what is here, the second paragraph, monuments show, uh, at all street lines shall be at least four by four, et cetera. And then monuments at all other lot corners shall be.
Oh, I see what you're getting at. Oh, I see what you get at, um...
Okay, so you're just saying, put in the word "other"?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll buy that.
Or, or monuments at other locations. I mean, it, it's, it's up to you, but I just want to avoid what seems to be a conflict to my reading of it.
Yeah.
Uh, Norm, I don't have a problem. Put a, put a four by four and a one inch steel rod in. That way, if the guy wants to pull out the, like he did over on, on, uh, on, what is that, Grizzly? Pulled the monument out, I want to see him get a steel rod out. That'll impress him. No, I, I agree with Peter. The "other" should be in there, so i- if there is a monument at one corner of the lot and the others three are off this, off the road, then they've gotta have one inch steel rods in them.
Yeah, okay, I'll buy that.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome.
Uh, the only other thing on this that you might want to consider is that if this is for both A and Rs in subdivision lots, then something needs to happen with that last paragraph to make it, claim that it's for also A and R lots? Cause this references street acceptance.
Oh. Uh, David just, David just earned his, his week.
Yeah. Well, can we just preface the whole thing with, with a new paragraph at the top? That this regulation, uh... Uh, what's the word I'm thinking? Uh...
But isn't this going in the subdivision regs?
Well...
It is, but there's also an A and R chapter.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a standalone section in our subdivision regulations, probably somewhere, maybe probably even before even the A and R section. Uh...
What if we, what if we were, um, lazy and, uh, put them in both, both sections? Use the same thing, just put it in both sections?
Well...
It should be stated as such.
Could we just, just start up the, uh...
In this, in this...
Paragraph, this regulation, uh, shall, uh, apply to all A and R and subdivision lots.
Do you want that at the top, Norm, or at the bottom?
I'm gonna say at the top.
So run that by me, gun, this?
This regulation...
Okay.
Shall apply to all A and R and subdivision lots.
How's that?
Awesome.
So therefore, the last paragraph would only apply if it's a subdivision lot, otherwise that section would not apply. But are you still looking for, so yeah, that would not apply at all then? So that last paragraph would only apply if it's a subdivision lot, not an A and R lot. Okay.
Right.
Good enough. And what, and that change regarding all other lot corners, Tim, since you're marking this up, you just want to add that language?
Where's that? Oh, the "other," that was, uh, right here, correct? All other. There we go. Yeah, when I get this done, I'll just, I'll send it back to Norm. Do you want me to just send this to David?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see if there's anything else. No, I don't know why "obtained" is, uh, highlighted.
Probably a space issue.
Yeah, maybe.
Huh?
That fixed it. Alright.
Alright. So Norm, can we move it to a public hearing now?
Well, do we want to do this as a standalone?
In all honesty, yes. Reason why? Because anybody who wants to come back in right now with a subdivision, new subdivision, will have to have this in there.
I, I, I tend to, Norm, to agree with Dick since this is sort of a major, you know, it's five, six paragraphs. It's not like we just changed a word or two. I think we should get it executed as soon as possible.
Anybody else? Uh, Sean, what do you think? Once again?
I think we should go ahead. I agree. Let's get it out here as soon as we can.
Okay.
Hello, legal review.
Well, to, to that point, should we, I mean, if we could do this with, in a parallel pass, send it out to legal for review and, you know, and set the, the, uh, dates for two weeks out or whatever, that gives legal two weeks to look over this six or seven paragraphs, which, you know, and then give comments. And then we can get public comments, we got legal comments, then we could, we could wrap this up a lot faster than doing it, uh, in series, do it in parallel.
Yeah, I, I'm just kind of, you know, thinking, and granted, it's been a while since we had done anything with subdivision regulations. But you know, I don't ever remember us sending any changes in subdivision out to legal review.
Neither have I. That's because, Norm, we were flat back then.
I think the change you have here is, is really based upon the two primary sources that we got from, from Quinn. We got the Spencer, we had the towns existing, we kind of, we tried to take a lot from Spencer emerged it, so I, I don't know if there's anything here that you really need town council to review, but if you'd like to do that, you can.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I guess, you know, more, more particularly, I'm, I'm wondering a little bit, you know, about the A and R part.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I am, Norm, because it, it gets back to my comment about can we be more restrictive on A and Rs than the state? So that's the reason why I was thinking, you know, have Amy or somebody in her staff just give us a, a blessing on this thing.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, as far as that goes, I mean, this isn't really more restrictive per se than the state, than the state regs. State regs indicate that an A and R can only be granted if it's real frontage on a public street. This is our, this is not that kind of a requirement. This is an engineering technical requirement to make sure that the lot, to make sure that the lot is sufficiently marked. The, the statute doesn't touch on sufficient marking, marking of a lot to not to grant the A and R. The, the state is, is concerned that with, with real bona fide access to the lot itself. These are, these are other things outside of the requirements for the A and R per se.
There you go. But do we have the right to force them to do that on an A and Rs? What I was curious about.
Yeah, and you know, I just, I, I don't know, and it's... The thing is, I'm, I'm pretty sure, you know, the mass, mass laws on the A and Rs are pretty brief.
Yeah.
There, there really isn't, really is not a whole lot there. And, uh, you know, I, I even sometimes wonder about, you know, what can we require being shown on an A and R? Uh, it would seem to me, you know, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some limits to what we can require, you know? For, for example, suppose we put in a, uh, a regulation that on A and R plants, uh, that the location of every tree over 12 inches of diameter must be located.
Yeah, on the plan?
Yeah.
Oh, watch your mouth, that was so...
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I don't think we can do that. But I don't know what says we can't either.
But I, I feel the reason why we're doing it is for the safety of the homeowner to know where their bounds are.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's why I want to put the word "safety" in there.
Oh.
That's our thing.
Well, that's just in our, our charge, no matter what.
That's right. And that's why I want to say it's safe to do it.
Think bad if we, if we tomorrow sent this out with a, an email, a Dave sent it, oh, he's off, uh, when he gets back next week, send it out to Amy? And, uh, you know, ask for her to, uh, just give us a review and comment, um, since we want to implement this in the, uh, subdivision, um, regulations?
You know, I, I don't think it would be a horrible idea.
Yeah.
Uh, she, she might even just come back and say that, uh, this is not something that she needs to comment on.
That's fine too, yeah.
But the other thing, uh, I would say is where this is, uh, strictly, uh, I don't know, this doesn't really make much difference, but when this is strictly internal planning board, uh, we'll be paying for that review out of our own administrative account. The town won't be paying for it.
Oh yeah, that'll come out of ours. I, I get that, but I, I just would rather have somebody just give us a blessing on this so when we implement it, we don't have to go back and, uh, um, redo it. Updating is fine. I don't have a problem updating down the road, but I want it to be right out of the gate.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Uh... Okay, I just, now, now I would hesitate about trying to set a public hearing date at this point.
Yeah.
That's not pulled off.
Because we don't, we don't know how long it's gonna take to get something back from her. And Dave is not gonna be able to do this until next week.
Well, why don't we set it for the second, the second meeting in December? That's, that's like five weeks out. We know we can probably make that, correct? I mean...
We should.
I, I would love you...
You think KPLA would be able to get back to us in that time?
Oh, God.
Five, five weeks they should.
Yeah.
Well, it's been, it's been four weeks for the, it's been four weeks for the Bessie, um, uh, A and R to get back from that, and that's holding up the builder in time, man. Sometimes I don't get, you know, what's taking them so long to get back to us?
Well, I, I would still set it, I mean, we can always, next meeting, if we don't have anything back and we don't have any comments, we can always pull it off, our next meeting, if we pull, I mean, the next meeting we have is in, in December, if we still don't have anything back, I mean, cause the next meeting in December is three weeks from this meeting, not two. Correct?
Uh... Uh, 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 uh. Twenty-four. No, it's only two weeks.
Two weeks.
I'm looking at my calendar and maybe I'm...
Yeah, December 8th is our next meeting.
Alright, so that is two weeks out. Um... I guess we could just get it out Monday or, or, Dave, are you back Monday or are you back Tuesday?
Be back on Monday.
Alright, send it out on Monday and I guess just make it, I, I guess in the email, ask or request, um, if, uh, we could have a comment back for our December 8th meeting? And then if it's back, Norm, we could just, um, set the, uh, public hearing for the next meeting then, I guess, is that, or do we need more time?
Well, the public hearing has to be advertised, so I'll need the 14 days to get it to the paper and probably week to set up the legal ad and all that, so...
Oh, boy.
Anybody object to going to the first, the first meeting in January?
No. My opinion, for the second week in December and, uh, a- a- and we do the legal thing in parallel with setting up the hearing.
Well, let's put it this way, I'll accept the motion.
Alright, I so moved to, uh, have a hearing on the subdivision rules and regulation monument bound revision, uh, public hearing on December... Oh, give me a quick second. December 22nd at seven o'clock.
I'll second that for discussion, which I have done.
Okay, any discussion on that?
No.
How much nog are we allowed to bring to the meeting?
Well, actually...
As much as we can get out of the town administrator's office.
Actually, by that time, I'll probably have some Swedish glug made up.
Uh... Uh, don't tease me, Norm. I've got a Mr. Winnaker, glug is infamous in my house.
To help tease us by eating it while we're all on Zoom.
Oh no, it'll, it'll be drank and, uh, I won't be talking after I have two of those.
At least not so anyone can understand you.
I was gonna say, Norm, there'll be some incoherent sentences.
Always blame church.
Okay, is there any discussion on that date for the hearing?
Alright.
Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Dick?
Dick, will you apply?
Sean?
Aye.
Uh, Tim? And Norm Anderson, aye. Motion carries.
Alright, I'm gonna stop sharing and turn it back over to whoever wants to take it over.
Uh... Okay. A- anything further on subdivision?
Oh, that's the time.
Do, do we want to include language to remove the islands in that same public hearing? That's an easy one.
I think that would be an ideal time, yes.
Okay, the, the motion was general enough that that can, I think, just be added when we, uh, print up the legal notice.
Okay. Excellent.
Anything else on subdivision?
I don't think so.
Not, nothing that's, uh, gonna, you know, happen right now. I think later on we need to have more...
Oh, yeah. Okay, next item is master plan update. Dave?
Right, so as, as, as the board knows, the town working with the regional planning commission was awarded a grant to start the master plan, uh, and to do this for key chapters of the master plan. Uh, so the update here is that there's gonna be a kickoff meeting on Tuesday, December 1st, uh, with the town administration and the regional planning commission, just to talk about timelines, committee formation, uh, and so forth and so on.
This is an open meeting in the library?
No, this is a private meeting. This is a private meeting between our town administration and, uh, the regional planning commission. We've invited Norm to be part of this meeting as a planning board chair. It's the kickoff meeting. It's not a pub, it's not a workshop or anything like that.
Yeah, I know.
So as things progress, we'll keep the board updated, uh, of course.
Oh, there's no doubt about it. David, you're gonna have to be, really keep everybody updated on that.
I I'm just, I'm just figuring that this meeting is probably gonna not be much of anything, other than trying to maybe get in place some timelines, uh, and some very, very general practices that are gonna be followed. I may be wrong, but that's my thoughts.
Exactly right. So I'm all set on that. I don't have anything else to add to that update.
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, next on the agenda, agricultural land study.
Right, so another project that's the, uh, plant department's been working with, has been working on, especially with the agricultural commission, is, is, uh, a study to look at the agricultural sector and to look at various things, including, um, market challenges that the farmers face. Uh, we're looking at some solutions and some recommendations to support the local agricultural economy. So this is a advertisement for a workshop, a focus, um, um, the rural agriculture market access focus group workshop. Uh, there'll be two of them, one on December first, one on December eighth. Uh, more details are on the town's website. Uh, these will be, uh, meetings held by Zoom. The access information is on the homepage.
Dave, um, I wanted to get you an article which I'll scan in. This is for your ag... I- it's part of the ag tourism, I guess, or the land, uh, the land study, is that for agro-tourism, or is that, is that a completely different topic?
Uh, this is not specifically for ag tourism. Uh, this is more looking at the ag sector itself. However, if there's any relevant information that, that, that would apply, you know, we would be glad to receive it.
Okay, I'll, I'll just, I got a, uh, article that was in my, uh, American Hunter that was about can a family farm help rekindle America's hunting s- hunting spirit? And it's, it's, it's focused on ag tourism. I'll scan this and email it to you.
All right, great, that'd be appreciated.
David, could you send it to me, too, please?
Send it to the whole board for their reading.
All right.
So, uh, the brochure for the ag tourism, uh, for the ag, uh, focus group is right here also. So if you go to the town's homepage, you'll see this. And this is the ac- the access information has been firmed up, and on the website itself, the other details are here.
All right.
So I don't have anything else on that one, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, anything on that?
No. The interest is to you, where it goes.
Yeah. Okay, next item, uh, zoning board of appeals member, uh, matter. Uh, someone on Seven Tanglewood is supplying for a variance. Build a garage, anybody any interest?
I wanna know, how come, uh, this isn't the only one, there's been several of them, and that have had problems over there? What, what happened? What went wrong?
Uh, you were my opinion, Dick?
Yeah.
Um, uh, I have a feeling, from what I understand, uh, some building permits were just issued, and, uh, not maybe, maybe not correctly, and I'm not saying under the current admin, I think under previous ones, there was, um, things overlooked is what I can understand, and that's about all I can say on it, and our, our previous... I, I, and I apologize for this terminology, it's the hired gun. Um, he didn't agree with what was going on, so, a- and, and I get it, what it said in here, uh, about the, uh, there's no way to build a garage, other properties have variances, or other properties have done it. So I guess my only question is, did the other properties get the variance, and I, I'm not sure, again, I don't wanna, I don't know for a fact, so I don't wanna speak, but, you know, yeah.
Well, shouldn't that be straightened out? And, and to me, I mean, I thought everything over on that neck of the woods was built according to the plan. And why did they build such a big house without a garage to begin with?
Well, that's a good question.
So it's not, it's not the, the, it might not be so much, I don't know if it's the developer, the building inspector, or whoever it is, but I just wanna make sure that the planning board did everything correctly.
Yeah, I, I mean, Norm, are they looking for a comment from us, or is this just for information?
We're allowed to comment. Uh... You know, the, the, the only, the only thing that would, uh, be relevant to us would be i- if some of the lots did not meet the required dimension requirements.
Yeah, see, the, the lots are fine. It's, it, it's just like, it's to what Dick said, the house might have been too big, and they didn't put a garage on it, or they didn't plan for it. You know?
That's after us.
Yeah, and, and, and my only comment was, I don't have an issue. It's tw- it's ten feet instead of twenty. I mean, yeah. The, the problem is, getting this through the zoning, uh, board of appeal, well, good luck with that.
Well...
Yeah, because this doesn't, to me, when I read this application, I've been through the process a couple times, I don't see any, uh, hindrance or, or any reason why this, you know, I don't know, I'll, I'll, that's it, I won't say anymore.
If I can remember rightly, I was on a concom at this time, uh, over in that area, and that's where Cle had poured three foundations on top of one another, in order to go to, uh, natural ground. Was right near that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that's, that's at the end of it, Dick, you're talking about, where it dropped off into the wetlands.
Yeah.
'Cause that, that whole, that whole area behind that cul-de-sac is all conservation area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, as long as it's not our fault, and, you know, hey, they screwed up someplace along the line, you can always jack the house up, put it on stilts.
Hey, you're being tough. Hey, we gotta, we gotta keep Mr. Lucier employed, that's what he's trying to do, is, is, uh, stay employed and build. That way it keeps carpenters, uh, roofers, uh, concrete guys all employed.
Well, I have to send them up to Hubbardston in outdoor camp.
Okay, anything else on this one?
No.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is business meeting, anybody want to...
Pass, pass.
Let's put it this way, uh, yeah, when we're together...
Did we get any information on the, uh, feedback from, um, Carl?
On...
We were gonna ask Carl about, uh, phasing sections, um, and if he had any checklists available that he's done before.
I don't know, Dave, have we formally requested that?
Uh, I don't know that we had a formal request for that, uh, we did talk about, uh, the pavement cut sheet, uh, the, the paint, the binder coat and all that.
Yeah. 'Cause he would, I, I thought we were gonna ask Carl to help us out with, you know, the binder, and then the, um, number of inches for base. We were gonna ask if he's seen anything in phasing, and then if he's seen in...
Also gravel.
Or he might use...
Also, the gravel underneath, I, is what I, uh, really like to see also checked on.
Yeah, that was the number of inches.
Yeah.
Right, we had the, yeah, I, I have that one on the list. Uh, the checklist, I thought we talked about that, we actually have a document for the builders regarding the revisions, is that what you were talking about, the revision checklist?
No, this was, I was trying, I was trying to get something that, you know, as we go through the, um, what's the first one, the, uh, not, not the, uh, oh, God. We're like, uh, an example of subdivision, where we got like, uh, the preliminary meeting, the, oh, I'm having a brain death, the first commission.
The preliminary plan?
Thank you, Norm, the preliminary, and then the final plan that comes in. Give them a checklist of everything they've gotta do to, to get there, or, and, and, you know, I don't know how...
I would just say we do have that in the subdivision rights, which call for the preliminary plan as an optional plan. Uh, the definitive is required, and that the requirements for each plan type are in the regs. Perhaps we can talk more about that in the future, but we do have those, we do have that covered. Uh, at least, you know, what's, at least the option to do the preliminary, then the definitive.
He expected them to call me, you think they heard me yelling about him? Um, I, I, all I was trying to do is, I, I, I know it, it, with all of the regs and everything we got, sometimes it's difficult to hit everything, and we might forget about some, if we had some type of... You know, I guess I'm looking, and I use the word checklist, basically, you know, I, I know we've done this with the, um, in the past, with the, uh, uh, estate lots, where we walk up to the, we basically did the checklist for the applicant by... Looking for, I, I, you know, ma- maybe I'm over, over-engineering it, but I just was looking for something that we could put in, in the folder, or in the document, saying that, yep, we've done this, move on. Sort of like a sign-off sheet that everything's accomplished on that section of what we're doing, either, um, estate lots, uh, special permits, uh, subdivision regs, you know, things like that, just, uh, what's the word, I'm look, make everything common, so we don't forget anything. I guess that's what I was trying to do.
Well, that, that would, that would amount to nothing more than just going through the actual regulations and picking out each individual thing and making it a bullet.
Maybe, yeah, you're probably right. I just was looking for some way to, to make it, yeah, I don't know, you're probably right.
Me, making a site walk mandatory for all of us to go and check on things, so that we learn? Or relearn?
That... That, that might be not legal.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I just, I was trying to come up with something that would, uh, say that, you know, the date we did it, so, yeah, let me think about it, I'm gonna back off, let me think about this a little bit more.
Yeah, just, just, uh, a little bit of an aside, I don't think we have formally, uh, yet asked Carl for those things about the roadway cross-section, uh, and, and, and any of those others. Okay? Uh, that said, I did, uh, talk with Carl, it was particularly talking about, uh, the rice lemon water thing. Uh, and I did happen to bring up that, uh, we were going to be asking him to look at that, and I mentioned that, Cle had mentioned that the eighteen inches of the bank gravel underneath, he feels is way more than is needed. And, uh, Carl actually agreed, he said, most everybody else only requires twelve inches.
But it's the bank gravel, wouldn't you call bank gravel, and other people call bank gravel, they're two different things, I believe.
Yeah, well, wha- whatever it is.
Yeah.
The, the fir- the first part of the gravel that has to go out, whatever it is. Uh, but he, you know, he said that...
Wanted to know.
Yeah, but again, uh, I don't wanna move on that until we do get something formal, which means we do have to formally ask him.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, for, uh, review of that.
Hey, Norm, I don't have a problem pulling out of our, uh, out of our general fund to pay him the hours to do that. 'Cause I think it's a benefit for us.
That, that's what it's for.
Yeah. Free, we're paying him to do his work, so, but keep track of the hours and bill us.
Yeah, which that's, uh, just a, a quick comment on our, our new town administrator. Uh, in, in one of my little talks with him, uh, I, I did come up with the fact that, uh, we pay for legal reviews out of our own money. It's not part of the town budget. Uh, because he was, because he, he went, was, kinda went off on a thing, saying that, uh, you know, everywhere else he's been, if you wanted to make use of the town's legal counsel, you had to request it of the town administrator.
Uh, no.
Oh.
Yeah, hopefully.
Oh.
I, I, I hope he understood, or Matt, you told him that, that we can go through day...
Well, like, like I say, you know, that's the way it has been. Uh, and, uh, I have my doubts whether he's really gonna wanna rock the boat on that, but it's something that's very foreign to him.
Oh, okay.
Oh, boy, he's in a foreign land, so he needs to get used to it.
I, I was gonna say...
Land.
I don't wanna slow down the process when we come up with a meeting on Tuesday, and then Wednesday morning, Dave gets something out to legal, I don't wanna have to send that email to the town administrator, let him, uh, i- i- when he gets time, look it over, get back to David to release it, I mean, that could be days, I mean... I, I'm not, i- if that comes to pass, I guess this is gonna get notched up a piece, in my...
We can make a pretty darn good case that what we're doing works.
Correct.
Well, it isn't wasteful. Uh...
It's not a cost to the town, that's the biggest thing.
Well, no, well, not to the town budget.
Yeah, and, and we don't overload Amy, I mean, we only use it when we think it's necessary, we have good judgment.
Yeah, so, anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Okay, well, that's not good to hear.
All right.
Just, just other kind of interesting things. Uh, an- another thing that, uh, apparently, uh, he is going to push for is, uh, I guess I'll call it some, I'll, for lack of a better word, I'll call it some seminars uh, for local boards, uh, on Robert's Rules.
Well, what are, to me, that's sexism now. Why not Ruth's Rules?
Yeah. Well, just the, the other part of it, when, when, he brought this up today, and, uh, I, I just happened to mention to him that for our town meetings, we don't use Robert Rules.
No, we never have.
You know, we use, uh, we use, uh, now, I forgot the other thing, it was called Town Meeting Times is the document that we use, he had never heard of it.
Welcome to the land of retinitis.
Yeah.
I refuse to comment on that at this time, I will say that Anita and I had commented on that earlier today.
Oh, really?
Briefly discussed it, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
You know, fine and dandy, you know, I, I don't know.
Leave it up to the moderator.
We're, we're probably one of the few towns that does use it, I don't know.
But to your point earlier, Norm, it works.
It, it seems to, it seems to.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, all I'm gonna say is, uh, don't, don't be shocked if you see an announcement that this is gonna be a seminar held sometime, we're too long.
If it's on vacation till Monday, but next week, get something out to Carl, to see maybe if he can get back to us in a couple weeks?
Yeah, Dave?
Yes.
You can do that.
On the binders, the binder... On the binders, the binder, um, cut sheet, what else?
Well, the, basically the whole road cross-section.
Road cross, right, I got, yeah, I got that one. Okay, yeah, we'll do. I'm sure like last time, he'll probably send out some, some, uh, examples, which your board can take a look at and choose from. And we can merge it with what we currently have and come up with something like, like we did tonight, so that'd be good.
Yeah.
And then, Norm, did we agree, and, and I don't remember from last meeting, 'cause I, 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 I'll have to go back quick through the minutes. Did, did we agree to get rid of cul-de-sacs, or were we gonna take a vote on that, or have a, um, was that gonna be just one of the...
That'll, that'll be one of the items in the public hearing we've already scheduled.
For, uh, uh, hearing.
Which, again, for, for that public hearing, uh, I, I'm gonna have to leave this up to Dave. I don't know how specific the notice of that public hearing has to be.
I'll take a look at that to make sure that's sufficiently, uh, described in the legal notice.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Alright.
Do we have anything else to discuss?
Not at this time. Just get us back, Norm. Get us back together. I like the hybrid.
Well, yes, I do too, and I, I guess the, and again, this is just my own personal thoughts. With the number of cases that are, seem to be coming around, and let's face it, with Thanksgiving, I, it just seems to me that that is gonna be, it, it's bound to give another boost to the number of cases
Oh, yeah.
of this virus. And, you know, three weeks after that is Christmas, and it's gonna be the same thing again.
Yeah.
So, to be...
It's New Year's Eve.
What?
We got New Year's Eve too.
Yeah. Uh, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, until they start really getting that vaccine out, I, I'm not, I'm not holding out a lot of hope. Maybe I'm just being too pessimistic, but... Uh, that, that's the way I'm seeing it right now. I don't like it, but
Yeah.
I'm not in charge.
Yeah, and there are days that I think that some people should not be in charge. That's my feeling.
Well...
I still like, where's the tent out in the parking lot so we can meet up there?
Yeah.
On, on the, on Matt Highway's property.
Hey, we can set up these little igloos like they do with some of the restaurants.
Yeah. Saw some yesterday, yeah, pretty neat.
Yeah. I don't know, little igloo with one of those propane heaters.
Yeah.
Why not?
Alright, my work. Alright, you all set?
Uh, I have nothing else.
Everybody else all set?
Yeah, I put a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, uh, before, before we do the vote, uh, Dave, are you all set with everything?
In terms of what?
In terms of what we've decided to do?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna have, uh, joint, we're gonna, uh, have a, we're supposed to have a hearing on the second meeting in December on monuments and removal of the cul-de-sac islands from the subdivision regs.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get this information out to Amy when I get back next week.
Yeah.
I'm gonna follow up with Carl regarding the roadway cross-section.
Yeah.
And then as we get other items, we'll just knock off a few here and there, and then have a hearing as needed for the other items that we can work on over the next year or so.
Right.
I, I heard months, not year, right?
I'll talk about other ones besides the ones that are currently in there.
I'm just being a smart aleck, which I do best.
Okay.
Hey, the quick thing, Dave, did you get, I sent, I just, I don't know if you have access to your email to see if you got...
Yeah, I have an email here. I haven't opened it up yet, but I do, I did see something come in.
That's all I wanna make sure of. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, any discussion on adjournment? Roll call vote, Dick?
Did he hear anything about Marilyn, why she's not here?
Yeah, actually, like I say, I have no idea.
Well, let's hope she's okay, that's all.
Yeah. You know, I don't even have her phone number.
Give me a moment.
Okay, I think I may try and give her a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
Just a rest. Alright.
Okay.
Because I'm in a good spirit, Norm, and Julian's still on, I'd like to wish him a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. I don't think we got all the way through the vote, did we?
No, we...
Sean Moore, aye.
Nick Williams, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.